A few items up front. First of all, we're going to move items 5.1 and 5.2 up right after the public hearing to allow our guests to hit the road. And I also want to say congratulations to everybody involved. I know George will want to do this as well, but the Sobieski Park Pavilion is amazing. It's just a wonderful job. I got a preview of it yesterday. Just kudos to everybody involved, volunteers, donors, and just everybody. It's really nice. Also want to mention the mayor's bike ride is tomorrow at 5:00 maybe. It was rescheduled for tomorrow and it looks like rain, but we'll see what the weather holds. It doesn't rain or shine, it's just shine pretty much, or clouds. Also want to mention that I wish everybody a very happy and safe Memorial Day. So, that's it. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to thank Margaret Shaw Johnson for her play, Mr. James and Mr. Jeff, and all the members of the cast that were there. And the Masonic was really shining that night. It was a wonderful play. Also want to remind council about the Project Fine. I think it's June 9th, 4:30 to 7:00. Heard from one council member who won't be in town and able to make it, but there's still a couple of seats left. If I don't hear from them, then I'm going to have to assign those to a couple of staff folks. So, let me know if you're interested in going. And also Sobieski Park. Some might say it's too good for the East End. I say nothing's too good for the Fourth Ward. And so, wonderful job done and truly an amazing project. Shows the spirit of the community.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Thoroughly?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Alexander?
Here.
Ayden?
Here.
Borzakowski?
Here.
Scholmeyer?
Here.
Under required public hearings, item 2.1 is the proposed 2019 sidewalk replacement project preliminary assessment role.
This is a public hearing, so I'll call the public hearing to order and ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak. Anybody here wish to speak to the public hearing? Proposed sidewalk replacement? Last chance. Close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
I make a motion without the attached resolution. I second that.
Okay, motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the presentation of the 2018 city financial reports.
Mayor and council, this is our annual review of the previous year's financial report. We have a comprehensive annual financial report, which also includes MDNA, a couple letters, and statistics along with what has been audited. We have with us this evening a person from Deloitte and Touche, a representative, to just give us a summary of the report. So, I'll call on Judy Dackendorf.
Thank you. Good evening. We have issued our report on the 2018 consolidated financial statements for the city of Winona. This report contains an unqualified opinion on the governmental activities, the business type activities, the discreetly presented component unit, the major funds, and the aggregate remaining funds that have been determined not to be major. So, an unqualified opinion is the highest level of an opinion we can give on the financial statements. Our audit this year did not include procedures over the federal dollars as the city did not exceed the threshold that required that audit. As we worked through our audit procedures, our procedures focused on accounting estimates in the financial statements and judgments that management makes in recording those estimates, and we noted no significant issues with those items. We also noted no issues with the city's accounting policies that are disclosed in Note 1 to the financial statements. Throughout the performance of our audit procedures, we had great cooperation from city staff. We also talked to individuals throughout the city around the internal control structure that was in place, understanding where account reconciliations are performed, reviews may be needed, approvals are provided for expenditures that are made. While we don't opine on internal controls, we did ensure that there was a sound control environment supporting the financial statements themselves. We did identify two uncorrected misstatements that were determined to be immaterial by both management and ourselves to the consolidated financial statements. And just as we went through our audit procedures, great cooperation, no difficulties encountered, and we are pleased to be able to present the audited financial statements to you today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, again, we had 45 minutes before the council meeting to ask questions, but if there are any other ones, feel free to ask them. If not, is there a motion to?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve for publishing the comprehensive annual financial report. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Okay, approved. Thank you very much.
Item 5.2 is the presentation for the award for the financial reporting.
I'd like to read a short statement here. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded their certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the city of Winona for its comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended December 31, 2017. This certificate is a national award which recognizes conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local government financial reports. On an average, approximately 15 percent of the cities in Minnesota receive this award. The city plans to continue to conform to the certificate program requirements for the future years. The certificate is awarded to the finance department, including Mary Berkter, Ellen Bergmeyer, Danielle Fettin, Carrie Putzier, Jessica Wohan, Christine Booth. And I'd like to present this to our finance director, Mary Burke, and all the other staff that are here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Mayor, how many years in a row is that?
Well, Mayor, every year I've been mayor, but...
I think all nine years I've sat here, they've gone in, so...
Mary, do you know the answer to that question?
At least since 96 and I'm not sure when. Hopefully, hopefully it'll just continue.
Okay, we hope so too.
Good job.
Congratulations and thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay, next item.
All right, under petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the appointment to the board of adjustments. I make a motion to approve Thomas Friesa.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 3.2 is the application for the on sale intoxicating liquor license for America Inn. Make a motion to approve that liquor license.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 3.3 is the request by the Columbus Foundation to dock the Nina and Pinta at Levy Park. Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion by George, I think?
Yes.
Seconded by Michelle. Discussion?
I think there was a date change to the high water. They won't be here till June 26th and will be departing on July 1st.
Okay.
So, if we could make the adjustments on the staff level.
So, I'd say so moved to reflect that change.
Yeah, I'm good with that too, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 3.4 is the request to hold Miles for Smiles Walk at the West Lake. Move to approve that request. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 3.5 is a request for after-hours use of Windcrest City Park. I make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. If you've never been to their demonstrations, I encourage you to go. It's really very interesting. I've done it a couple of times. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 3.6 is a request to convert 15-minute parking to two-hour parking on Second Street between Washington and Winona Streets.
Move to approve the ordinance or introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is the award contract for the 2019 Tuminus Mill and Overlay project.
Move to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Mayor, just, Brian, when will work begin?
Where?
It's up near. Dunne Blacktop has a ton of work in the area. They've got State work, they've got county work, and they've got city work, not to mention our vertigo drive. They'll probably do piece mill, they'll probably do the mill portion in one section and then do the reformation portion at different time. But plan's going to be a ton of work.
Oh, okay, good, good. Thank you.
Okay, next item.
4.2 is the award contract for the JV Drive Sewer and Water Extension Project. Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Paul.
So, I would just like to, how many homes are we doing this for?
Around 40.
So, I just want to make a note that this is $2.5 million for 40 homes, which is a lot. And I think it just goes to emphasize our need to look at infill and higher density within the center core of the city. I mean, I think a lot of city people are kind of paying for this extension out there. Will we be able to have a chance to have more homes tie into this in the future?
Not at all, not at all. We can extend it further up the valley, but it's not anymore dense further up the valley. It's a very similar subdivision as we go further up the valley, but not that many more homes.
Thomas Lane and Michael Wood?
Yep, yep. Yeah, if you've been out there, the densky is not, they've got 200-plus foot frontage.
So, I just think, just looking at it, it just seems like we're really outlaying a lot for some pretty wealthy people in a, you know, high-end part of town. So, I just want to make that note, and I hope that we can, you know, in the future, when we look at these developments, consider maybe having them pay a higher share, if that's possible.
Al?
Well, you know, I think there's another side to this too, Paul, as you well know, that we have a requirement that when septic systems fail, then the next step is to connect to a city sewer system or to get that wheel turning to make that happen. And I don't know if this is the case here. I know in some other areas in that same area, which is the former Winona Township, they did have some failing septic, so they did have the opportunity and the requirement to hook up to city sewer and water.
Michelle?
Yeah, the problem is there's a point of sale, and people can't sell their homes when they have a septic system, and that's a newer law. And their only option is to hook up to city, and that is one of the responsibilities of a city, is to provide sewer and water, clean and healthy water and sewer systems. Some of these people's septic systems, not in that particular neighborhood, dump right into ditches. It's just not a good situation. On top of that, it's not that I'm not willing to look at charging more, but when you charge more, it has to be across the board. You can't pick and choose neighborhoods to find, you know, to give them a higher fee. So, I'm not really, unless it's something that makes sense for the entire city, I wouldn't be in favor of that because you're charging more, which actually hurts the people that can't afford to pay it, in my opinion. I think what we have is reasonable, although we probably are still a little behind what other cities charge for septic.
It's our intention to look at that and if the adjustment is...
Yeah, I know that you've been talking about that. I know we're probably behind other cities, but I just, I still, I mean, there are people on the side of the city limits that still have to hook up. There are still properties out there or that need replacements. So, I just want to be careful about what that number looks like. That's all I have to say.
George?
What is the assessment now to hook up?
12,000.
12,000, okay. Okay, because I know, in fact, you weren't living there at the time, Paul, but when they ran sewer and water out in the Glen Mary area and Glen Echo because of failing septic systems, then, you know, we met and then we had it run, of course, out to Westburns Valley as well too, then it continued on. And I believe our assessment, I think, was $10,000 to hook on, so, and like I say, in fact, the house you have, Lorraine would not have been able to sell that because they needed a sewer system, so...
Paul, did you want to?
Yeah, and I would be the first person environmentally to say and to encourage hooking up to septic. But I would want, I would hope that as a city, when we're looking at developments, that we discourage further developments that put in septic systems. It seems like in the future, we might be moving in that direction to bring city services out, because this is a very expensive, I mean, $2.5 million, you know, we have a $1 million budget for street work, and it's coming out of the same budget. That's, you know, for, you know...
This comes out of the sewer and water, which is not the same budget, but I understand what you're talking about.
Right. And so, I'm, you know, I would, I'll vote in favor of this, but I just, you know, for 40 homes, $2.5 million is a lot. And, you know, but again, I would certainly be the first person to vote for going from septic to city, because it's definitely the way we should be going, so...
And this is what we have here tonight.
Any other comments?
Just one quick one, you're on. This is a, this is a good lesson for everyone to understand why the city gets involved with developments that happen in the township on the fringe of the city. And, you know, the relationship that we have now with Wilson Township, we've been working through a lot of these, but this is what happens when you allow some densification to happen right on the outskirts of the city in the township, and then the city has to come in and do the annexation, and there's all of this issue, well, here's a $2 million tab that the taxpayers pick up to, you know, to bring them in to correct the situation. So, it's one of the reasons that our staff is working so hard with the township to make sure that we fully understand what these things happen, but that we have a say in what happens on the periphery of the city, because we're the ones that end up having to pick up the cost.
George?
Well, this is just all similar to Winona Township. Right before I got on city council, they had the annexation battle going, because I think there were 10 homes that were, that had failing septic systems. And of course, they had to annex to the city, and I think we all knew that if we're going to be annexing Winona Township, we're going to be bringing up the expense of sewer and water extensions as well too, so...
This is former Winona Township.
Right, yeah, this is former Winona Township as well, so... But now there's no curb or gutter ran, correct?
No.
Yeah, it's just a blacktop road, so there's a lot of savings there, so they can keep it somewhat kind of rural-looking yet from when this started out 20 years ago, so...
Anything else? I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Under new business, item 5.3 is the permanent and construction easement for construction and operation of the lift station at 101 JV Drive. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 5.4 is the Commonwealth proposed development at 602 Mankato Avenue. I'd make a motion supporting the development and to approve the attached resolution. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. George?
Yeah, could Lucy or Nick explain what we're all doing here? Because I think the public's kind of conceiving something different as they see this, so...
Mayor, council, with this resolution, what it is for is to support Commonwealth's application for housing tax credits for a proposed multifamily project on Mankato Avenue. With the housing tax credit program through Minnesota Housing, it's highly competitive. Last year, there was about 70 applications. They funded around 12 to 15 projects last year. They anticipate over 100. So, with this resolution, what Commonwealth's ask is, was to pass the resolution. If council concurs with request, this will provide more points to their application, be more competitive, and increase their chances to be awarded the housing tax credits.
We are not approving any TIF district tonight or any TIF proposal.
We are not approving any TIF district. What we need to do, staff has not had sufficient time to review the total development costs, along with Commonwealth has, they haven't been able to provide total development costs either, because it's very in the preliminary stages. So, we need that information to see what their allocation would be potentially for these housing tax credits, to then determine if there is a financial gap to work with our legal counsel and financial advisors before we would come back to council with any type of ask to use TIF funds for this housing project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, let's vote. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 5.5 is the Masonic Temple exterior restoration bid authorization. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Questions? All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Item 5.6 is to amend the city fee schedule, the recreation fees. Make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. I have one question, if you don't mind. Could you define the size, the small, medium, and large-sized events? How you define that?
Mayor and council, we had a difficult time coming up with a term for that. I can give you an example and then try and define, I guess, small, medium, and large. If we have a request to use Levy Park and it's from, let's take example, Farmer's Market, the infrastructure that they need and space they need for their event is considered medium because of their electrical pole, closure of Second Street North to the plaza, then the plaza into the parking lot of the movie theater. That would be a medium. A small would be, we've had requests for the closure of Main Street to the alleyway. One of the most recent ones was a local church wanted to close off that area and have a family event, where families could come down. Small. No electrical power really drawn. Large is, best example is like a Midwest Music Fest, Big Muddy Brewing, Kew Craft, you know, beer tour. Significant space, significant electrical draw, significant requests. We didn't know how to define that other than small, medium, and large, so some of that is going to be the determination of our department when they fill out their permit for the space. So, we do fully admit that it was difficult to term, you know, to put a term to those, but they certainly are larger, medium, or small events. It doesn't affect their rental fee, which is also, I think, a positive thing, it's their damage deposit fee. So, if the park is left in good shape, they get that back. We also felt that there, you know, there's some room for interpretation of small, medium, and large there, because it is just the damage deposit. Another way to look at that would be Steamboat Day is using Levy Park, large event, there's the potential for significant damage. We would certainly charge more for a damage deposit than, you know, the local church wants to use part of the plaza, so...
I have one more question. I think I know the answer, but let's just hypothetically say some club or organization wanted to set up a card table with some brochures or something. Do they pay the fee for a small event and deposit?
Um, here in council, that depends on the type of event.
Okay. And if they went down to Levy Park, for example?
Like, I would go down with my table and I set up stuff about Winona National Friendship Center. I don't tell you about it, I'm just out there, and I'm handing people that walk by my brochure. Is that what you're talking about, kind of like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, just randomly, I show up there and I do something in the park without contacting you.
I guess the candleworms do a lot of it here, but...
I don't want to be too specific. You're just like a group of people doing something in the park without rental, without going through you. Are they supposed to?
Mayor and council, we would ask that they do that. I think that falls into the solicitation ordinance that we have, also gets into some of those other ordinances about, you know, if you were, happen to be a group that wanted to set up a card table and sell some...
Jewelry?
Jewelry or cookies. We have some ordinance rules that say that that's not allowed on city property without a permit.
Eileen, you had a question?
I did. And this may be a stupid question, but there's listed for Levy Park, a club nonprofit per hour, and then club nonprofit tax exempt hourly. Are those the same thing?
So, mayor and council, those are different.
Okay.
So, there are, in fact, some club or nonprofits that are tax exempt, and we do have some club nonprofits that do pay tax. So, there is a difference between the two, and that's why the fee is slight, slightly different.
Okay.
Pam?
I have a question about the docking fee. Is this anybody that pulls their little boat up to the, up to the levy and lashes it fast and takes off to explore downtown is, should be paying a fee?
Mayor and council, that is not, that example is not related to this fee. This fee is more related to the one you just approved in the packet when the Columbus Foundation docks for several days.
Okay.
Has requested the city portable water, electrical pole.
Okay.
Then we charge a docking fee.
Thank you.
Paul?
So, you have a Levy Park and Park. So, I'm assuming we have Levy and then any other Park is what the other park fees would be for, like East Rec or Lake Park, all of Lake Park, part of Lake Park?
Mayor and council, the park fee is a general term that we use within our fee schedule, where we get requests to use, like the example that was just given, some neighborhood parks where they're not within our facility fee, like East Rec is a facility, it falls under our facility fee. Levy Park, because it's large, is within our Chapter 51 schedule. So, we didn't do the other, well, 25 parks within the system. This covers those that aren't within, like, the detail of Chapter 51.
So, like Sinclair Park and Strawberry Fest or something like that?
Correct.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Why is Levy Park so much more expensive than Lake Park or Sinclair Park?
Mayor and council, Levy Park primarily because of the resources that you get within Levy Park is how we determine the fee. The other factor is the electrical pole. So, an event comes in, they draw electricity for the bands for a large event. Our department is picking up those fees, we're paying that electrical bill, and so we're trying to recoup some of those costs.
Wouldn't that be true for the band shell and the bands over there though, too?
It is, except we're not pulling as much electrical for those facilities. It's a lot, it's a lot less.
Thank you. George?
Just something related, I mean, I'm okay with all this here. What is the rental fee, then? What will it be for Sobieski?
[laughing]. Do they have a retirement farm?
Mayor and council, I don't have that fee in front of me, George. I know that it is the same fee as Holsinger and Lodge. So, we consider the Sobieski Park Lodge the same as Holsinger for the time being.
Okay.
Certainly, again, the facility is beautiful. We'll determine what we can charge for that facility, but in many ways, for a starting point, we equated it to our Holsinger Lodge.
Other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Closed. Hearing.
Council concerns?
We'll start with Al.
Okay, echo your comments, Mayor, at the beginning of the meeting tonight, wishing everyone a safe and enjoyable Memorial Day holiday. And I also want to extend sympathy to the Dwayne Shep family. Dwayne recently passed away. He was a good neighbor when I was growing up on Fairfax Street. He was also a good city worker in the engineering department. He worked with my dad, and he was a good friend to our family, so sympathy to Diane and Andy and their family. That's all.
Eileen?
I've got a list. Just wanted to... Um, uh, just wanted to echo congratulations to, um, Margaret Johnson and the cast of Mr. James and Mr. Jeff, and I think that the theater was full every night for the show, so it's very exciting to see theater happening in the Masonic. Um, I have a question about the, um, train tracks at Sioux Street. Um, I've had some people ask if there's any possibility of smoothing out that transition, um, and it's one I go over a lot, and it's extremely uncomfortable.
They just fixed it.
Did they?
Yep.
Okay, great, never mind then. I didn't bike over it today.
No, it, they did, they just fixed them.
Like, today, yes.
Today?
I think so.
Well, last year, they redid them.
They redid, I think, half of it, but your predecessor wanted them to stay a little rough, 'cause he felt that slowed people down.
'Cause they'd fly over them.
They were the worst in town.
They were the worst.
I'm talking about, like, yeah, you're, it breaks your bike, though.
Yeah. I don't know when else they're pla, well, the road is supposed, is up for construction for many years now.
Yeah.
So, I'm waiting, and I'm sure when that happens, we'll get it fixed.
Brian'll check in on it.
Right, yeah. But I'm happy as soon as I can.
Yeah. Okay. Um, and then I've had, uh, lots and lots of emails and phone calls about truck traffic on Fourth Street, Mechanic Street, Sioux Street, um, lots of places that are not, and, uh, going up on people's lawns, um, going through uncontrolled intersections, um, and just being dangerous, so if, I don't know, I know there's some special circumstances because of Bay State using that other warehouse, but...
Uh, there, we've, uh...
I don't know.
We've been increasing the patrolling and will continue to do so.
Okay.
If people have any specific instances, they should let the police know immediately so they can try to track down the driver. The problem is, is it's not Bay State's drivers.
Right. They're done at that point.
Right, so it's, it, it's difficult for us to track them down, and...
Yeah.
The way that the trucks work by truck route, so we're trying to get them to go on, on one route and stay on the route, but the drivers come from all over and their GPS tells them to go one way and...
Right.
They tend to follow that, unfortunately.
I don't think they're parking on Third Street like they were, where they're all lined up.
Um, yeah, the concern wasn't parking, it was driving down streets that they shouldn't be driving down.
Right. And, and some, some members of the public have expressed concern that the sewer lines are gonna collapse and some other things, and we don't think that's gonna be the case, so...
It will deteriorate the ruin quicker than it's supposed to.
Possibly.
Yeah. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Michelle?
I have nothing tonight, oh, except for Mark. Congratulations on your retirement.
Happy retirement.
Oh, well, thank you. Don't feel that way yet, but getting close.
May it come quickly.
Yes, thank you. Pam?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Paul?
Look forward to seeing everybody for the Mayor's Bike Ride tomorrow. Good weather permitting.
Good weather.
Thank you. George?
Okay, happy retirement.
Thank you.
So, I know what it's like, you'll enjoy it. If you get out the house at about five-thirty in the morning, come back at eight at night, so... A couple of good lead-ins here, talking about trucks. Like I say, I talked to Brian about, uh, trucks, uh, traveling on Second Street, which Second Street is not a truck route. I know we've had some good conversation on that, and so keep, keep kind of an eye on that. And railroad tracks, uh, what is the status of, uh, the Hamilton Street Railroad track? They did one, one, uh, side of it, then there was the other side, and I know we were in discussion, is that going to, uh, happen? They said it was gonna happen this year yet, or, uh, any word on that?
I don't think so. I don't think they're scheduled for this year.
It's kinda like Sioux Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh...
Like you say, one crossing's good, and the other one, not as much.
Right, so we got half of it, but it's, it's...
I know they played with it last year, but, uh, it's not perfect by any means.
Okay, okay, so anyway, work hopefully will be done in the future on it, so... And, uh, just like to say that I would like to thank our mayor and this council and past councils for your support for the Sobieski Park Lodge, a very, very beautiful building. And, uh, you know, they said, you know, the Neighborhood Watch Group says, you know, thank you to, as I just mentioned, to this council, thank you to all the donors, and if not for the donors and some very generous donors, that building would not be a reality today, but it certainly is, and it's a great addition to the east end of Fourth Ward, and it, and the pavilion is open for everyone to rent, not just, uh, everybody in the Fourth Ward.